All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Secretary Mathias, would you call the roll?
Okay, Pastor Moody is excused. Dr. Randles is excused. Mr. Ross?
Present.
Shatkey?
Here.
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Fahl?
Present.
Dr. Flores?
Here.
Mathias, here. President Baker?
Here.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda, and you want to announce our first item?
I absolutely would love that. Dr. Baker and members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to ask John Helmuth, Dr. Robertson, Ron Gorman, Malonge, Dr. Kalambula, and in turn, they will ask a few other folks to stand in just a few moments. We're here to celebrate being awarded $10 million as a result of the XQ grant, a grant that was launched to redesign high schools. I'm looking for Dr. Hanks as well.
Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Hanks.
Chad? Okay, okay.
Why don't you, if you were involved in the extravaganzas last week, why don't you come down and sit in the front row also? The rest of the crew.
Oh, good. Curriculum people.
Anybody connected to the museum school, please come on down.
So what you're seeing is just a portion of the team that actually includes 54 different individuals who participated in the XQ super school project from its beginning. And Dr. Chris Hanks and Josh Spencer, Josh, you should be up here. Josh Spencer is the $10 million guy. He's the one who helped write the grant with Dr. Walter DeBoer, Dr. Chris Hanks. Just to kind of, for those in the audience and those viewing from home, Grand Rapids Public Schools was one of 700 applicants for the XQ super school project. This is a project launched in large part by Lorene Powell Jobs, who is the widow of Steve Jobs, and they launched this to really reinvent public high schools. And they put out originally a $50 million carat to be split between five school projects, and in the end, they ended up doubling down, and it was $100 million prize, split between 10 schools, and Grand Rapids Public Museum School was one of those 10. So we are now $10 million to the plus. That dollars, those dollars will be used to renovate 54 Jefferson, which will be the future home of the Public Museum School. It does include some dollars for technology and some programming as well. But we had a dynamic team. Chris and his teachers and students had a lot of film crews over there in the last four weeks, and we're just ecstatic to be part of it. We had a team of us, including Dr. Baker, Dr. Fahl, Mrs. Evans, the crew here that went out to Washington DC last week, had a chance to participate in the festivities, good chance to meet MC Hammer, I think that was the highlight for a few people, and really just celebrate with the other nine teams on this great accomplishment. So we're here to celebrate the XQ super school award for Grand Rapids Public Museum School.
Any else want to?
Dr. Hanks or Dale, you want to say a few words?
So I guess I'll stop here as I pass it down to Dr. Hanks. So when we shared the news with our children, my youngest son, as the way a college responded, "Congratulations," shows you what a little elbow grease can do. And yeah, there was quite a bit of elbow grease that went into the whole process, and so my thanks to this board, Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education, all of the staff inside of Grand Rapids Public and the 54 other members that included Grand Valley State College of Ed, Kendall College of Art and Design, as well as the museum staff that helped out on this. This is truly something that could not have happened but for all these different partners and everyone coming together with a singular focused goal. And we went through some pretty good exercises that, I'll tell you what, some of the, in many ways, some of the best times of my life, I met people on your staff here that I didn't know, that were just absolutely blew me away with the talent. So as more we went through the process, the closer we got, the better I felt, given that, you know, with the talent in this room, how could we lose? And so my thanks and congratulations to everybody involved, but for the leadership of those of you, including a running guy, where it kind of all kicked off, and then Wendy also to you also for a lot of the work that you did early on in the process. So, and several others, Malonge, John O'Connor, many others that were there right from the very beginning. So thank you, thank you for that.
I guess I would just like to say a couple of things. One is the most, I think the most important question that we've been asked through this process is why our school was recognized in this way, and when I think about it, I think of three key things. One is leadership and direction. So the XQ people over the last week made it very clear to us that one of their key considerations was institutions that had the capacity to execute this rethinking of high school, and the direction and transformation of GRPS is something that they saw as a strength, and we definitely had that capacity. Second thing is collaboration. So Dale mentioned all of our partners and these individuals who put in so much time. We, I'm convinced, earned this award because all of these entities within our community work together, and that's something about this place that's just remarkable, Grand Rapids and West Michigan. So I think in order to be successful, we have to leverage that and continue that work. And the third thing is just vision. So once again, you know, the folks that were mentioned earlier, who've been on this design team longer than I've been around, just have this clear vision that's going to be really great. And going forward, the charge, I just think this is important to keep in mind, XQ made it very clear that this task of rethinking high school, they're serious about it, and we need to be serious about it, and it's about, you know, improving education and outcomes for all students, not these 10 schools, not the Public Museum Schools. So we want to impact opportunities in GRPS through curriculum and programs for other schools and then, and other communities across the country beyond. Thank you all very much.
As I said to Malonge, that's something Carolyn Evans brought to attention early on, is that this needs to serve broader.
And just to build on that, so for me, I think, you know, I think about the whole experience and the moment where they announced that we were awarded the award with the Museum School and the explosion that happened here at home while we're in DC, seeing Dr. Hanks and agreeing from ear to ear, Mr. Nealektoom, it showed to us that I think the students saw that we invest in what they are and who they are as people. I think about, I saw a new word that I learned recently, it's called the satakim. The word in Hebrew means that people who are willing to take advantage or willing to disadvantage themselves for the benefit of the community, and it's people that give up their resources, their talents, their assets, their entree into society, position they have to help our community get better. I think I saw that, I see that in our team here we have here. So I think I work with the satakim, the board, it's important to see that, so I'm very encouraged by that. Thank you so much for your support.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, a couple of things I want to shout out. First of all, some of the vision, I think what was so deep about it was not just what, like, from Dale Roberts, not just what the museum could do for the children in the community, but his understanding of what the children in our community could do for the museum. And that was hugely behind it, and also behind the other institutions that were involved in it, how much the children and their level of engagement with what we've archived and what we design and what we focus, and to engage those kids or young people in our community with that work, and how much that would change our community and how much we had to do that. The other thing, when I saw the other projects, I was going back to our work as a team, and there's, you know, design thinking as part of a curriculum and pedagogy, and project-based learning is very trendy, but I think this design and then the leadership with Dr. Hanks goes so much deeper in that it integrated all of them in a really thoughtful way of very restructuring the curriculum without ever losing sight, now I'm looking at Carolyn Evans here, of the foundational skills needed to do all of that work. And I'm not sure some of the other projects had that built in, and so I'm really hopeful and really excited that this really is innovative and really will be revolutionary, so I'm really excited.
John, could you, we should at least introduce that.
Absolutely. So our team, among other things, includes Gail and Cindy from Kendall College, who were early partners from the very get-go, Mike Pastumas, who was with Grand Valley's College of Ed before Dale stole them, and to where he's now the head of education for the Public Museum, Kate Moore, who's my counterpart in communications at the museum, Kevin Hollahan, who was over at GVSU in their College of Education, Josh Spencer, the $10 million man. So this is, I mean, some of this is some of the early crew that worked for two years before the school even opened. And, yeah, we just have quite a dynamic team. Our curriculum team, you know, Gorman, the whole crew, we've just got lots of people within this community who participated and played an integral role. Like I said, 54 members of the XQ super school team, so was Ann Wall, Cheryl Lofton, I'm missing members of the team, but, yeah, go ahead.
Including a number of parents and the entire staff of the Museum School, and indirectly all of our students, and students from Innovation Central High School and teachers and principals from around the district who we did focus groups and interviews with, a lot of people contributed to this.
I apologize to grandstand, but I want to pay a compliment back to the board that was issued in your absence. So Lorene Jobs and Ruslan Ali both together said, one of the things that made an enormous difference to them was that when they saw in our application that the entire board unanimously agreed and approved this school and its premise, that it, she didn't even finish the sentence, she just went, "So you should know, they recognize your work on this as well, and you as a team recognizing us." So thank you.
You were the first board to do that.
Wow.
That's it, we won.
So, anyway. Well, you go. So, quick comments. This, actually Teresa put this on the website, and I wanted to post, I started, when I posted something about us winning, I started to write names of people and what they contributed. And Dale said last week that, you know, pretty soon we'll have 1,000 fathers and mothers of this thing, and I'd leave out, and I'd get 999 and get in trouble for the thousand that I left out. But John, I mean, John played a huge role in this, and since he wrote a lot of the media releases, he left his name out, but his role in this was really very important as well on everybody. And it was a pretty great celebration that we were a part of last week, and I felt really happy to be a part of it, but it was like it was a celebration of what can be done. And so anyway, it's really, really nice. Appreciate everybody being a part of it, so, thanks. Go ahead. All right, a public comment for any board agenda items?
I have none.
All right, we'll move on. Secretary's report.
Well, how exciting. I think also what's most exciting is to see how it's going to ripple effect across our whole district, what we're going to learn and implement in our other 52 schools that I'm sure that we're going to benefit from. Just a reminder to board members that there is a KIASB dinner meeting, the Kenner Media School Association Board Dinner Meeting is October 11th for a presentation on how to do high schools and early middle school, college programs, working together to empower the workforce of the future. And also featured will be information on how or who is running in the incoming election for GRCC Board of Trustees, and what's happening with the GRCC presidential search process. Dr. Steve Ender will share thoughts and reflections for his tenure at GRCC. The other thing is that Michael Washborn will be honored in the 2016 Education Advocate Award. The event begins at 6 o'clock and will be held at the Windsor-Rottweil Applied Technology Center at GRCC. If you haven't RSVP, please call Julie Anderson. The other thing that we wanted to encourage our parents to get involved in their local school, school is just beginning, and so this is a great opportunity for you and for us as parents to really get in front of the game and really support your local school and all the things that are going on there. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to ask John Helmuth to come again. He's going to share with us about our celebration regarding the Cherry Street Clinic opening at Central Innovation.
That's right. Ms. Evans, President Baker, members of the board, I'm here tonight to give you just a quick update and overview. We have an exciting ribbon cutting. We've had lots of ribbon cuttings in the last four weeks, but this is yet another celebration of a partnership with, in this case, Cherry Health, our Spectrum Health friends, where we will be cutting a ribbon on a new Cherry Health clinic. It's a school-based clinic at Innovation Central High. This is one where, you might recall, we had closed the one that was at Creston, and looking at how do we best meet the needs of students, picked the Innovation Central High campus. And thanks to our friends at Cherry Health, they raised more than $1.1 million in private donations to create the state-of-the-art clinic at Innovation Central. And so we'll be there this Friday, 10 o'clock in the morning. We'll have our superintendent, the CEO of Cherry Health, and I think we have a parent and a couple of the doctors and dentists that will be there as well as the donors. So if you're able to join us, we'd love to have you for the celebration.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Dale Robertson to join John Helmuth, and they will share with us information regarding the upcoming millage.
Fancy seeing you, I've seen a lot of you lately. I'm here tonight to introduce Dale Robertson, who's already well-known as our CEO, president of the Public Museum. He's here as a tag team crew. I know Peter Darienzo, who's the CEO of the zoo, was hoping to join us, he's giving another presentation, but they're here to give a presentation about the upcoming zoo-museum millage. This is something that's on the November 8 ballot, and I'm just going to turn it over to Dale to share more information.
Thank you, John. Members of the board, as John mentioned, I'm Dale Robertson with the Grand Rapids Public Museum. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and it really is to share with you some information about a millage that will be appearing on the November 8 general election ballot. It is a millage to support the Grand Rapids Public Museum and the John Ball Zoo. The need for the millage is that it will provide a stable source of revenue for, into the future, that will allow then for both publicly-owned institutions to be able to care for the publicly-owned assets that we both have responsibilities for. The zoo this year is 125 years old. They have 1,600 animals and 140 different species of which they must care for. We are the second-largest museum in the state of Michigan with 250,000 artifacts and specimens by the most conservative count that we are responsible for caring for and holding into public trust. Our collections include not just what is on display at the Vannan Museum Center, but also into the archives where the Museum School students will have regular access. And if our plans go forward as we hope, under the passage of the millage, more and more groups and schools and public will have continued access to those artifacts. But it's also the Norton Indian Mounds, the national historic landmark, the oldest man-made objects in West Michigan. It's the Voight House, it's the Calkins Law Office, the old existing building in Grand Rapids, and in a partnership with the local astronomy association, it's the Veen Observatory out in Lowell. All right, so all pieces that come together ideally under the passage of a millage, which will honor, which honor what I believe is the original purpose for things that were given to the museum, which 98% of what we have in collections were donated by the people of West Michigan, which is for education and inspiration. So this millage would provide that core, stable funding for both the zoo and the museum to continue to do its work from now and into the future. It is a 10-year millage. It is .44 mils. So the median value of a home in Kent County is $170,000, which means that home, the millage price is $37.40 a year, or $3.12 a month. There will be audits that will done and be shared, so the money will be collected by Kent County, distributed to both institutions. We have to account for how every penny is spent, which will go directly to care, maintenance, and operation, and then report those out into the community. This does put us in a position then, since we lost our city funding in 2008, that we will now then be able to go out to private donors and engage with the community from a position of strength, to be able to then to make the kind of additions and improvements that we really need to make with our core operations covered, and then we can engage to do and do more projects, like maybe like the one that we just talked about a little while ago. And the zoo has very similar plans. Let me go back to one point if I can, right at the beginning, and then I'll stop, is that both the zoo and the museum are publicly owned. So the city has owned the museum since 1903, and the zoo is continuing to be owned by the county. So that's a uniqueness about these two institutions, is that who owns us, you know, we do, you do, right? And so these public dollars going to public assets to care for these publicly-owned assets and make sure that they are going to be used and available for those to which they are truly there for and to serve the broader public. So with that, I thank you for, oh, good point, there are benefits that come with this millage also. So for the zoo and the museum, we have slightly different business models. So for the zoo, a community benefit will be free school groups, for Kent County residents, and of course, free parking for the Grand Rapids Public Museum. It is free children, 0 through 17, so it can be with a school group, on your own, with a parent, grandparent, guardian, whatever. Reduced admission for adults and seniors and free parking. So that will be available for Kent County, all Kent County residents. We did hear many of you when we had the meeting at the 54 Jefferson and the joint meeting with the mayor, many of you spoke about how you would go to the museum as children, and it was free, and that resonated. And so that was part of the goal that we wanted to reach here, was that combining education and accessibility. And then we feel that that's a way to meet the promise of those who gave those artifacts, which is the soul of the institution.
And both are partners with Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Correct, and both are partners with the public schools.
Any other, any questions or comments, discussion? Yeah.
My comment is related to that free part, and incentives for both Grand Rapids and Kent County residents to have, in terms of access to the zoo and access to the museum. Because when I first learned of the proposals, that was my first question, is what is it that is going to benefit, or what benefits are there for residents here, and what incentives are there for us to continue to pay the number of proposals that have been presented to us as taxpayers? The reality is, is that, you know, many of us operate on fixed incomes, and we have an intercity community that certainly is impacted by these increases, because they are, the vast majority of them renters, whose rents go up in addition to additional taxes and prices, price increases, and we have been through a very serious recession.
Well, one of the things that I'm very pleased and proud to co-chair the campaign, and one of the reasons I'm so pleased to do so, is that I believe firmly that by building on these institutions, we increase public access to, I mean, right now, we have a lot of access for people with money, with their families, to a lot of wonderful activities, and access has been limited significantly in green spaces and other things in the past, and this will help to enable a broader access to a broader spectrum of incomes and families. So I think it's well worth the investment for all of us to broaden that kind of experience for all of our families.
Yeah, the access is key. I mean, the free part makes it accessible, but I just remember that the museum to me when my kids were little was, you know, once every year, destination excursion rather than a part of their community, and I think that they would have loved to go by on a weekly, monthly basis to just hang out at the old streets of Grand Rapids, but it would cost me 40 bucks to do it. So now this makes it accessible for a parent to take their kid there, and I think that that'll change the relationship that residents have to the museum, because it'll become a community center rather than a destination excursion, so I appreciate that. What would you like from the board? Are you requesting support from other municipalities that you're talking to, or how can we help individually or as a body?
I, both.
I said how.
So any member that would be willing to become an endorser of the campaign would be very beneficial and would appreciate it as an institution. If there would be a consideration of a resolution in support of the millage, that would also be very beneficial and would be appreciated by both the zoo and the museum.
Okay, so perhaps at our next meeting, we can have a resolution to consider for the board to support. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for having us.
So just one thing that should be noted, so while we were in DC, Dale Robertson has really created national acclaim, and so his hair is now on the, is now a discussion item with all sorts of celebrities.
Trending on Twitter, I think.
Yes. It's replaced the burn as the hair. All right, we'll move on. Action items, can we get a motion for the policy 3150?
Move for approval, second reading of policy 3150, budget, fund, balance.
Support.
Any discussion? This is our second reading, and simply goes into reflecting the changing state definitions for what a fund balance is. So, all right, let's call the roll.
Okay, Pastor Moody is excused, Dr. Randall is excused, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shatkey?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Fahl?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Or Mathias? Yes. President Moody?
President Baker?
Yes.
Okay, pass.
All right. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda groupie?
So moved. Support.
All right, call the roll.
Okay, Pastor Moody is excused, Dr. Randles is excused, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatkey?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Fahl?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Or Mathias? Yes. President Baker?
Yes.
All right, a few discussion items that we need to discuss. First is, there is a request from the administration to do a joint, another joint board city commission meeting at 54 Jefferson, and actually, John, would you be okay? Because I want to know what the time is, so this is proposed for October 19th, and to be more specific.
Well, and, yeah, and the trick on this is that they haven't really defined the timeline per se. We know October 19th, we know that they are interested in a large community celebration where they're going to be paying for music, live art. celebration, where they're going to be paying for music, live art, food, free food trucks. And so we've identified the Grand Rapids Public Museum as a location. We are tentatively looking at either 10:30 or 11:00 o'clock for this joint session. It would be maybe a half hour at the most, because the SAF has their lunch celebration, their big luncheon, annual luncheon. And so the idea would be to get as many guests to go back to that event and then do the regular programming back at the museum between 1:30 and 3:00. But this is absolutely in flux. We don't have specific times. They originally were saying 12 to 3:00 or 11 to 3:00, somewhere where the school is still in session. So the students will be able to benefit. And they, they're bringing the XQ super school bus, which is converted. And so the kids get to, and the public can interact with that. So, but again, this is one of those hurry up and wait modes. We really are just waiting for them to give us more clear direction as to what their expectations are for that day. But tentatively, we're shooting for like that 10:30, 11:00 o'clock.
And we, we would, as a body, have an agenda to, to do in, in relationship to the city commission.
That's correct. Be very similar to what we did at 54 Jefferson, where you formalized the agreement to, to swap 54 Jefferson in exchange for some parkland. We are just finalizing the actual, we're now closing on that deal. And so this would be the official closing, you know, passing of the, the historic key, which I think Dale has a oversized key that we may use as part of the symbolic 54 Jefferson key passing. It'll be very ceremonial, but we're, we're going to see if we can keep it short as well.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait for more information on that. The MASB Annual Leadership Conference, and there's two issues. One is attendance to that, which we all are invited to. And secondly, we need to actually, I think Julie said that she'd like to know by the end of this week who is going to be our delegate. The date of the conference is November 10th to 12th. And it's in Detroit this time. So we're not actually quite sure who will be ongoing board members until, until November 10th. So, but
It's true.
Because we got lots, because it is.
Yeah, I wonder if they thought of that when they did that conference. It's like, anyway.
It's like, this is today's election. I'm just, like, we're not the only ones, or like, some, some people who might not be.
So John wants to go, "Hey, you didn't get elected. Sorry."
All right. So anyway, it's, it's really valuable. It's, I'd say it's November 10th to 12th. It actually tends to be more valuable the earlier you get there. By, by Saturday the 12th,
Right.
there's fewer people around and engaged with. But I would say that it's certainly really important. There's lots of topics that are important to us going forward and changes. And, I mean, even the board role has changed legally. And so this would be a good place to learn about that. So any of us can go, whether we're planning on being board members next year or not. So we can still all go. But we do need to have delegates. Is anybody that's really absolutely pretty, pretty sure and is willing to put their name in as a delegate?
Maybe.
That's absolutely pretty sure?
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly.
Likely.
Okay. So we have three likelies. Okay, so it's noted that Mr. Ross, Dr. Mathias, and Ms. Slade are interested in be, being delegates. And then if you want to go to the conference, you can decide that at a later date and just communicate that with Julie. Okay? And she'll work out all the plans, the travel plans, et cetera. So.
How many delegates do we get?
That's a good question, but let's go with our slate of three. And you probably only get two.
I think, I think you probably.
But let's put three down anyway.
No, I think we get more.
It says up to four names.
Up to four, okay.
It was the three of us.
It was you, me, and Monica.
Okay. Then let's, let's go with these three. If you change your mind by Friday and want to add your name, feel free. But if you want to just go to the conference, you can decide a later date. All right, public comment for any agenda items or, or any issue?
I don't have any cards. No, I don't.
All right, superintendent's comments.
No, thank you.
No? So, all right, board member comments. This time I'm going to start from with Ms. Slade and work this way.
Just excited about all the things that we're doing in this district. It's just really amazing how far we've come. And I think we should congratulate all of us for the really hard work that's gone into making this a really good board and a good district. So, thank you all.
Dr. Phob?
I'm just thankful for all the hard work of a great start of the school year. I know my two sons are having a fabulous year thus far. And it's a privilege to be up here and support all of you.
Yeah, I think, I think that as a, as a district, there is a much more positive feel within our schools. And when you, when you look at and visit particular schools, you, you can, you can really see that. So that's really exciting. We, we just need to continue to build the capacity of, of each of our schools to be successful. So.
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
I'm excited too. I think certainly kudos to all those who, who contributed their time and their effort, their intelligence, their diligence to, to task, to accomplish this great feat with the super schools. I think we ought to be doing more of it, more competitive applications that, that we should be engaged in. I think we have a great staff. We ought to be engaging our, all of our stakeholders, our teachers, our counselors, and, and put these new innovative ideas on the table. Get a nice, you know, group of, of people out there writing for grants, because there's more money to, that could be brought here to assist us to uplift this school to the highest level. And I think our children deserve more. So.
Thank you. Ms. Shatkey?
We, we set a goal to recruit students into the district. And it's really, truly innovation like the museum school that's going to let us achieve those goals. And so I just thank our community and our partners and GRPS staff especially, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for just keeping us at, at the edge of public education. So thanks.
Thanks. And we were in, and I shouldn't remind people that, but we were national news last week for two different stories. Both stories, though, I think, presented Grand Rapids Public Schools as a group of people, including the board, who are thoughtful about what we're contributing to education and, and are willing to grapple with things that are difficult. And so feels pretty good about this. There are some things, and the award is, is pretty fantastic. And the celebrity status that we all pretended to have last week was, was really a lot of fun. But there are lots of, and I agree with Dr. Flores about trying to get even more opportunities in here. But lots of things that happen in the district will never get awards and are pretty remarkable, too. So I remember last week, looking on Facebook while we were traveling and seeing that a teacher had, a friend of mine who's a teacher, had excitedly checked into professional development. And I was like, that is quite an accomplishment.
That's really great.
That's more significant than perhaps $10 million. That doesn't mean, and agree, again, I agree with Dr. Flores, that doesn't mean that all our problems are solved. But it does mean that, that we're working towards it. There are stories at Innovation Central High School and all of our schools that will never get the, will never get MC Hammer's vote of approval. But anyway, I think that it's still pretty good in us working together. And, and again, I think that this, this thoughtfulness that we have, none of us, none of us leave here feeling like our work is done, you know? And all of us are willing to engage with people who feel like we need to work harder in another arena. So anyway, it's, feels really good. So with that, we're adjourned.